Yeah, we.
The TV volume is up all the way.
It is all the way. Is there another remote up there? What is that?
That's I think that's for the lower device.
Computers all the way up, the TVs all the way up.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, John. Whenever you're ready, we should be ready to go, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, everybody. It is September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, six oh three P M. I'm going to call the Solways Advisory Committee Meeting to Order. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated
No.
by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and whether items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'm going to do the calls to order. John Lawrence, President, Chairman.
Tom Perry, I was with the tenant.
A Bob Perry member.
James Aggie, Building Commissioner.
Um, Mike Ballantyne Administrator, a member, yeah.
Peter Cairns-Slutman, number.
Help agent.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, um, is it formal public meeting? Should we, uh, pledge allegiance?
Yeah, I think so, that makes sense. Okay, sorry. That's all standard for the pledge allegiance. I am the District of Light of the United States of America into the Republic of America. My nation, my God. New business, Review and Discuss Act, Help See Textile Recycling Program.
So, uh, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I do want to introduce, I do want to introduce, uh, uh, can you want to introduce, uh, Nicole, uh, we know, uh, from Help See to everybody? Um, we, um, given the challenges of the pink bag programming, I given the challenges of the pink bag program and, uh, the momentum, frankly, the Board of Health has really built, uh, with the textile recycling program, uh, we really wanted to explore, uh, you know, other opportunities to help see, um, and other avenues, uh, you know, so number one, we don't, uh, lose the momentum that we've built, uh, but we also, uh, you know, maintain and build upon, uh, the success that we've had as a community with the pink bag program as well. Um, so Help See is, um, oh, yeah, based on my me, based on my research that I've done, uh, you know, with the challenges that the simple recycling, um, has encountered, um, Help See, um, oh, you know, has been able to, from what I've read and seen, uh, like really come in and really, uh, like address, uh, like, uh, like a market need and, um, so like we wanted to like, um, invite Nicole, um, to come tonight to explain, oh, you know, like a little about their program and how it works, what, uh, options could be, uh, uh, like if we were to contract with Help See, um, um, and then have a discussion forward from there. Uh, uh, so if, uh, so if it's okay, Mr. Chair, uh, if we could invite, um, Nicole to provide us with a presentation?
Yes.
That's okay?
Yes, yes, yeah, thank you, I can, I can, sorry.
Uh, so just one thing, Karen, would you just say give, um, give the Zoom participants the ability to, uh, to share their screens?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make them a whole straight?
No, you just have to allow, uh, them to share their screens, uh, like if she does have a presentation. So, so yeah, like if you click on the arrow next, uh, next to share screen, there'll be a drop down there?
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I should be good, I should be good at going to call.
Okay. Just let me know when you can see my screen.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. All right, so I'm just going to present to you, um, who we are, who Help See is, the textile waste problem, the goal, the how, and the opportunity. Do I sound a little bit louder for you?
A tiny bit.
Okay, so who are, who we, who are we? Um, ever since Help See started in two thousand seventeen, we've already turned more than ninety-five million pounds of direct from consumer clothes into, um, ten million dollars, ten million dollars paid to landlords and over two hundred nonprofits. We've helped municipalities avoid waste expenses of over four million dollars. And we've reason, we've, sorry, responsibly disposed of two point six million people's clothing. We are proud to be the only vertebrae, vertically integrated certified B corporation in the clothing collection industry. So we intention, we intentionally are a second chance employer, giving meaningful work experiences to everyone, including veterans, formerly incarcerated, and those, um, whose English is a second language, people of color, people who have migrated to the U S. We also offer all of our employees stock options. So what does it mean to be a certified B corp? It means that we need to use our business as a force for good. We meet the highest standards of overall social, environmental performance, transparency, and accountability. We turn waste into living wages and affordable, sustainable clothes. So the textile waste problem, the average American actually discards over a hundred pounds of clothes and shoes per year. Eighty-five percent of that ends up in the landfill or the incinerator. Help See fixes this by making clothing reuse more convenient and compelling through using our bins, our clothing drives, and home pickups throughout the Northeast. We are able to collect two items of clothing every second, and the way we're able to do that is through our unique collection network of twenty-four hundred bins on over a thousand locations, hundreds of clothing drives and special events, also free home pickups for three million people in over twenty cities in four states. So how do we operate? We have a fleet of thirty trucks. It's probably a few more right now. Um, we have about fifty-five friendly drivers and we have four warehouses. In Massachusetts, it's in Woburn, Mass. Um, we also have them in New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. We also have depots. Um, we recently opened them out in the Midwest, which is Illinois, Maryland, Illinois, Michigan, and Ohio, but we also have from Maryland, South Carolina, Virginia, and then also up in Vermont. Um, it's a lot of clothes and it's a big problem, so how can we work together? So the goal would be to divert fifty-seven thousand pounds of textiles from Dayton in the, um, in the first year from their waste stream. That number I got from taking your population and then typing it, multiplying it by seven and getting about fifty-seven thousand pounds. And so it's only about seven pounds per resident, but I'm sure we'll do more than that, just, you know, in the first year, it's kind of slow getting people, um, used to doing home pickups. So the how is, um, these are the acceptable items that we accept, so it's anything in any condition, whether it's torn, worn, stained, missing buttons, zippers, it can be brand new with tags on it, as long as it's dry and odorless. So it's any clothing, footwear, accessories, linens, and then we even accept stuffed animals and luggage. These are our current municipal partners. So in Massachusetts, we already work with Arlington, Attleboro, um, Bill Ricka, Boston, Brooklyn, Cambridge, Georgetown, Ipswich, Malden, Medford, New In Salem, Tingsborough, Watertown, and Westboro, but we also work in, um, New Hampshire, Connecticut, New York, and New Jersey. Since we started the home pickups, um, in April of two thousand twenty-one, we've already collected over two hundred and twenty-seven thousand pounds just from Massachusetts with home pickups. These are the fifteen municipalities we currently work with. You can see them on our little map. Helps We Can Help Dayton by supporting the Mass D E P initiatives. Now with the textile ban, we can also, um, help you keep textiles out of the landfill, but we will provide tonnage reports that you can use, um, for part of the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program to earn grant money or through the point system, the Waste Prevention Outreach, um, textile recovery initiatives, things like that. Um, home pickups are a convenient option for residents. Um, ever since COVID, a lot of, um, people are used to everything being brought to their front door, whether that's groceries, Amazon packages. So why not have clothing pickups? It's a free and easy service and it's, it's easy. You just sign up, bag up, and then we pick up. Um, they would just, the residents, all they have to do is go on our website, click on the home pickup link, put their name, email, phone number, their home address, and the zip code, and then pick a date from the drop down box. That date or that day of the week will be, um, chosen between, um, Dayton and, and Help See to see what's the best day of the week that works for your residents as well as Help See. This way, there's no conflicts with trash or any other programs that you have that, um, where residents have to leave things outside. We also offer clothing drives, so we help organize and then pick up all the textiles. We pay, um, we pay a royalty to the host for the textiles collected, and our drives average about three thousand pounds or more, and they can be planned around any event, whether it's a standalone event or a household hazardous waste day, any of the community events that you might have. And then we have our Help See bins. So, um, we're, our drivers are trained to clean in and outside of the bins, in and around. Um, the goal for Help See is to service the bins when they're halfway full, so this way there's no overflow or unsightlyness at the bins. And we also have a customer service, twenty-four seven customer service, so if you had noticed, um, that the bins need to be serviced or there was something outside the bin, somebody may have dumped, you just give us a call and we'll be there within twenty-four hours to pick it up. The opportunity is to pay, um, Dayton two cents a pound or forty dollars, which is forty dollars a ton, to divert thirty tons, which would save you almost three thousand dollars in tipping fees, and we would pay you approximately twelve hundred, um, a thousand two hundred dollars for the textiles that were collected. The more we collect, the more we're going to pay. So this is just based off seven pounds per resident, and I'm sure a resident is going to put out more than seven pounds of textiles. We also have community outreach, so we will work with, um, with you to talk to the community about textile recycling. So what we do is we provide you with the materials, a press release, social media posts, um, a home pickup F A Q sheet, an acceptable items list, and then a black and white flyer if you wanted to use that for printing. This is just a sample of one of the media, um, social media posts. We also have continuing education around the textile recycling. So what we would do is monthly provide you with social media posts that you can share, whether it's on your social media, whether it's on your website, however you prefer, just letting the residents know that in this month, you rec, um, you recycled this many pounds of clothing. We can also provide any other materials that you need, you know, or any other events that you request. Um, to learn about where Help See, where the clothes go that we collect. Um, so what it is, is we're the, we're a hundred percent vertically integrated, so we go from collecting stuff to Ecom. So that means there's everything we collect, whether it's donated or sold. So we also have a online store that we now started, a secondhand site. It's called Help See Shop. Twenty percent of everything that we collect is recycled into things like industrial rags through our recycling partners, seventy-five percent is reused. So that's either the middle tier, which is sold in bulk. Eighty percent of that is sold within the United States and North America, and then the highest tier is resold on our website. Um, Help, the Help See Shop, Help See dot com. Any non-clothing items that end up in our collection, such as books, toys, we find homes for those besides putting them in the trash because we want to be as, um, sustainable and keep everything out of, out of the trash. Um, but the best thing Helps You can do is to, for clothing, is to keep it wearable for as long as possible. So we try not to recycle unless absolutely necessary. Um, another way, um, that we, what we do is we give back. So we just started a program this year. Um, it's called Project Warmth. So where, our goal is to give away a hundred thousand coats to different organizations in the underserved populations for this, um, for the winter of two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. We also do the clothing drive, so we've already facilitated, um, last year with three hundred forty schools and community, um, clothing drives. So they're a great fundraiser for, you know, whether you have different organizations in your community that you want to share this information with. And then we also have the Community Affiliate Program, which is new this year. Um, it's a way to invite the community partners to join Help See. As our business grows, our website, Help See dot com, and we will give you a link, and five percent of those sales would be donated. Uh, five percent of those sales from that link is donated back to the organization. So if you know an organization in your, in the town of Dayton, that would, this would work for, whether it's a, um, a food pantry or a local, um, homeless shelter, any way for them to bring in extra revenue to support your programs, this would be a great fit. The Community Affiliates Program is, uh, super easy. All you do is share the link or the code, um, whether it's on your newsletter or your social media, um, pages. Um, there's also, um, digital communications that you can share with your community. Every purchase that's made through that code, five percent of the total sale value is received by that organization. So this is just an example. We work with Bloom dot org, and, uh, that's their affiliate link. That's it for my presentation. Any questions, comments, concerns? It's a lot of information, so.
I have a question.
Definitely share it with you. Go ahead.
Um, you mentioned, um, that I, I took it as an expectation here in Dayton, uh, fifty-seven thousand pounds of closing, clothing from Dayton for the first year. Um, what happens if that weight is not met? Let's say it was forty-five thousand.
It's just a, it's just a goal that we have, to try to get every resident to, to put out at least seven pounds. That's what we hope to do within the first year, but it's not, it's not, uh, you know, it's not a guarantee that we're going to do that. It depends on how, um, active the community is in helping with that.
Okay, so in other words, if, if it's, uh, an expectation, but it's not met, that's, is there no negative consequences to the town? Okay.
No, no, no negative consequences. We would just have to figure out what we can do to help get the community more engaged, to get more people with items out.
No, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that number is usually using all three modes of collection, so if you're just doing home pickups, we might not meet that goal in the first year, unless the town is super, you know, used to that and they're constantly, you know, putting things out every week. It's, it's achievable, but you may want to add bins to the mix. If you don't like bins, maybe, uh, yearly clothing drive or, you know, something like that.
This is Jim. I have a question.
Sure.
So I, I was told in the past that you don't supply bags, yet one of the slides I saw bags with, uh, Help See name on them. Is it true that you don't supply bags or what are, what are our options?
No, we don't supply bags. That was, um, bags that someone had left outside. Our drivers are trained to take pictures of the items that they collect, so that was a picture from one of our drivers. Somebody had wrote Help See on the bags.
Okay.
To let us know that's the items we're allowed to take.
Okay.
So the resident can use a box if they have it. If they don't have a box, they can use their, you know, if they want to donate their luggage bag, they can do that and fill it with clothes. Um, it can be anything that they have, and it doesn't have to be left on the curb. It can be left anywhere that they feel comfortable. If they don't want to leave it outside and they can say, um, on the special instructions, you know, I'm going to leave my bags on my porch, you know, not visible from the street, please walk onto my porch, or they could say, please ring my bell or give me a call and I'll meet you outside.
Okay. I have another question. Um, I noticed in your website, which seemed very user-friendly, that there was a dropdown list for pickup dates and times.
Yes.
Does the website use an algorithm to calculate that, or do they have, can they pick any day of the week? And the reason I ask that is we've had trouble in the past with our current vendor about getting pickups because of driver shortages or fuel prices, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, will you, in your website, concentrate pickups so that we can, you can come to town for more than one stop?
So what it is, is what we'll do is we'll put your zip code in based on that day of the week that we work out. So whether you want to do it on Tuesdays, every Tuesday of that month will be an option for the resident, and they can just schedule a pickup. So it could be thirty pickups in one day, it could be forty pickups in one day.
Okay, so we'll narrow it down with you before that website goes live.
Yep, what day of the week you prefer for your residence, and sometimes I know a lot of, um, towns don't want to do Mondays because that's usually when holidays fall or right after the holidays, it falls on a Monday. Um, but you can, it's pretty much any day of the week, and then it's by appointment. So a resident can pick what, you know, what month, that day of the month. So if it's every Tuesday, pick the third Tuesday. And then if our driver only has five home pickups in Dayton that day, we make sure he has other things on his list. This way, he's not going there, getting four bags and coming back empty. We make sure he services bins, whether it's in the next town or he picks up for a clothing drive. We make sure that, you know, we're being as sustainable and, you know, not wasting gas in a sense.
Understood.
I have a question. Um, the proposal you sent said it's forty dollars a ton.
Yeah.
Is that a U S ton or a gross ton?
Um, it's, I guess it's two thousand pounds. That's how I do tonnage, two thousand pounds. I'm not sure.
No, the vendor we currently have uses a gross ton, so that's twenty-two hundred and forty pounds, so I just curious.
Oh, no, it's just two thousand pounds of what we go by. So when I do the calculations, that's what I pick. I don't know. I guess that's, is that a U S ton, I would say?
U S ton is two thousand, yeah.
Uh, can we talk about the bins for a minute?
Absolutely.
Uh, where were you thinking they would be located?
Uh, anywhere that you feel is good for your residents, so any, on any town property, whether that's your, if you have a transfer station, if you have a, you know, the town library, um, a parking lot that's owned by the town, um, one of your, your parks.
Well, I, I think at this time, they'd probably only be a lot at the transfer station. And that, uh, affect the amount that the town of Dayton would be giving you if we only had access on a Wednesday and a Saturday?
Um, I, I don't think that's going to be a problem. I think that would be a great addition to home pickups because you'll be diverting more textiles, and it'll increase how much poundage you're getting paid.
Traditionally, the bins, um, bring in a large source of, of, of revenue for you?
Um, they, they do bring in a large amount of textiles, yeah. It just depends. Um, you're not, if you're, say you're only open one day a week and residents aren't used to the bins, it might be slow in the beginning, but once residents realize there's also bins and they, you know, they don't feel comfortable having someone come to their house, they'll frequent the bins more.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
It just depends on what the residents prefer. Some are unsure about having someone come to their house. Some would rather throw it in the car and drop it off at a bin. Some need more time and they say, hey, oh, there's a clothing drive. I have a month to get it together. They clean out their house and they drop off at a clothing drive.
Right. Uh, and where would these clothing drives be? I mean, obviously, we would decide that we're going to have one, and where are they traditionally?
Uh, usually at the transfer station or at a school in the parking lot, we can, um, have a truck.
Okay.
Sit there and we fill up the truck, or you can have it at one of your other events. I'm not sure if you have a hazard, this household waste event, it can be the same to that.
Yeah. Uh, unfortunately, we just had one.
It's okay. We can do it as a standalone. You can have it, um, whenever you want, the fall, the spring.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I see you did book bins too?
We, we used to do book bins. We no longer do the book bin. But I do have some contacts, if, I do have a contact if you want to get a book bin.
Really helpful, yes. We, um, have an interest in that, I believe, right, Todd?
Oh, we already had somebody reach out to us, um, get it on our next Board of Health meeting to request a selectmen to allow a book bin at the transfer station. So we're just going to add to it a Help See bin, I would assume, or a clothing bin, not with any particular vendor, just because we want it to stay there, but. Yes, if you got another name, you can throw it at us, but.
Discover Books, that's who we've worked with plenty of times in the past. For some of our bin locations that, um, were only book bins, they were becoming only book bins, no more textiles. We gave them over to Discover Bins, and they put their bins there. I actually, um, referred Discover Books to, um, the old Mills Stones, Old Stone Mill Center in, um, was it North Adams? Mass? We work with them. They have, they have the book bin, and they're a nonprofit organization in the Berkshires. I guess it's the Berkshires, yeah.
Uh, um, one of the things in Nicole, like as I mentioned earlier, we've really built up some, uh, you know, some really good momentum with the Pink Bag Program through Simple Recycling. Um, and I think to, uh, you know, to, um, to do Maggie's point, um, uh, uh, right now, we have a so-called Pink Bag Program where the, uh, through Simple Recycling, where the pink bags and gnome, oh, you know, they're, they're part of the effort, oh, you know, like in there, oh, you know, people now associated the pink bags with, oh, you know, the textile recycling. Uh, and, uh, is there any, I mean, so we've even so entertained, actually just even printing our own pink bag just to keep up, uh, with, uh, the expectation with the program that people have actually really come to expect. Have you guys, uh, given the market challenges, I guess, have, uh, you know, have you like seen any, oh, uh, uh, like have you seen any other communities experience any challenges and so like any type of transition and migrating over to another vendor, and I guess how is that going with expectations, I guess?
So we actually work with a couple towns that were simple recycling that changed over to us. Then the residents, um, were fine with the, the changeover. I think that weren't a big deal to them because they, it was okay with them to use whatever they had available. And then, of course, we provided all the community outreach materials to let every, you know, move changes.
Okay.
So it's not a big change because they have stuff in the house they can, they can use already. It can be an Amazon package bag, a box that they just got, they could throw the clothes right in that and we'll pick it up.
Okay.
We've actually picked up, you know, the plastic tub, sometimes they've given those because they didn't have that.
Okay.
Hey, Nicole, I guess, I'm not hearing anyone else, anyone stiff on anyone's toes. Not, not to be negative, but, uh, is there a minimum that you're interested in coming to Dayton for, or is there a maximum? Kind of similar to what Mr. Perry was asking about.
No minimum, no maximum, whatever, whatever you, we're, we're pretty relaxed with that. So our agreement actually gives you the option to choose any of our services, and there's no minimum or maximum involved.
And, and looking at your Matthews here, uh, with existing clients and municipalities, it seems to be a whole Eastern Connecticut, Rhode Island, Southeastern Mass, is there a potential trucking problem? You know, district-wise?
Nope. So in Massachusetts, we'll operate right of, out of our Woburn, Mass, um, warehouse for Massachusetts home pickups. In Connecticut, we operate out of our New York warehouse. In New York, we operate out of New York, so everyone.
That explains the Western part, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So everyone, everyone has their own. So everyone, everyone has their own hub or depot or warehouse for their, their state.
Nicole, I have a question. I don't want to put you on the spot. How long are you with Attleboro and how many pounds are you picking up from Attleboro?
Attleboro, we just signed up in this month, September. So we just started it and it's a small amount, but I can look real quick and see if I can get that number. Give me one second.
So we may be able to help you then with your room in this area because we're not far from Attleboro.
That's perfect. So you'll probably be on the same day as, you might be able to be on the same day as Attleboro if that's easier. We've collected nine hundred and three pounds so far. We started, actually, we started in July. No mistakes. It wasn't this month. We started in July and from July we collected a hundred and five pounds and then in August we jumped up to seven hundred and ninety-eight pounds.
The startup issues. The word out there.
Yeah, it's just all about education.
Yeah, so just so everybody's aware, we've been running somewhere around twenty-seven hundred, twenty-eight hundred pounds a month in what was being picked up by Simple Recycling.
What was that, Todd?
So we've been running about twenty-eight hundred pounds a month through Simple Recycling.
That's good.
It's short of the fifty-seven thousand pounds in a month, so, or a year. But yeah, it's about thirty-six thousand a year, give or take.
It's still over thirty thousand. That's pretty good.
Yeah, that's really good. For, for a small population, that's really good. We have some larger populations that we work with that aren't, that we haven't met our goal yet. So we're gotten close to our goal.
Todd, I have a question for you. Do you see an issue with changing the help seat from Simple Recycling? Because they, they do not, help seat does not accept everything that Simple Recycling did?
There probably have to be an educational component that's supposed to respect styles at this point.
I'm curious if what they accepted.
Good one, help videos.
They took shoes.
We take. We take.
Pans, pots, jewelry.
Okay. Jewelry, but no household items.
Blender, microwave, like, pretty much anything they could, that was working that they could resell.
Oh, okay. We don't openly accept those items, but if a resident wants to put a bag of clothes and it had a blender in it, we wouldn't like leave it at their house. We would take it and find a home for it.
But obviously, if we make this switch, we would have to do an educational component anyway to tell everybody what's going on. So we would obviously just include that in part of it.
Yeah, I have a, I can, I'll end up providing you with a home pickup sheet and acceptable items list that you can share with all residents.
Do you, um, oh, you know, like, and just really given the market challenges out there in terms of, you know, like sustainability of, of entities like Help C and others. Do you, oh, you know, what do you, I mean, I know this probably you know, but do you, oh, you know, expect any issues in terms of Help C sustainability at all or? Oh, you know, like, like it was, Help C pretty confident in their business model right now.
We're pretty confident in our model. We've actually worked through the pandemic. While other textile companies and business companies had to pull out, we were able to continue through the whole pandemic. We've grown from that point to now.
Okay.
We've recently expanded.
I have a question. Nicole, how many bins can you just distribute throughout town?
As many as you would like.
I'm sorry?
As many as you would like.
Okay.
Depends on where, as, if you want one at four locations, we'll do four locations. If you have ten locations, you want bins, we'll do ten locations. It's whatever you think is going to be good for your residents. And then if we notice that they're not doing so well, we would discuss it with you in regards to if they're being, if they're not.
So Nicole, this is Jim. I have another question. So, um, Titan has a bylaw strictly restricting collection bins because we're located right between two major cities. And what we found is a lot of times the bins were being used haphazardly and there were items dropped there that shouldn't have been. So if we did consider amending the bylaw and allowing another bin, how would your company react to the fact that that is possible? Where we have stuff that's dropped off that maybe shouldn't be at your bin and maybe doesn't fit the criterion that you set for?
If we notice that it tends to be everything we're not accepting, we would inform you of it and we would try to work with the residents to let them know that these are not the items we take. But what we would do is we would just take what's in the bin and deal with it when we get it to our warehouse. People have put, put all types of things in the bins. We've had people dump crabs in the bin, like seafood crabs. We've had people put lamps in the bins. We've had things in the bins and we just figure out how to deal with it once we get there.
All right, yeah, I'm not making the promises though. That was a highly contested discussion townwide. So I don't know if we're going to be able to add bins in other locations. But I think at the very least, if the selectmen were obliged, the transfer station would probably be the best location.
A more controlled environment is a great idea.
I, I could see the, the transfer station. I can't see going back to putting them around town.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with you.
They were nice. They, they were not kept up. They were overflowing and I'm not saying your company would have the same situation, but it took a lot to get rid of them. I can't see bringing them back.
Yeah. No, I understand your concerns.
Everybody good?
I'm good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
See, we'll be in touch, Nicole. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest in Titan.
Oh, thank you. You're welcome. Have a great night.
You too.
Can we just start throwing stuff on the floor here?
Sure.
So to speak. Can you speak a little, a little louder?
They can't hear you.
Sorry. I was thinking from a, from a business perspective. From their point of view, if they come to Titan by excellent service, they can sort of ripple out to the other town. I get the sense that they're a, a growing company. And as I said, if they can establish themselves here, they can ripple out to, you know, our surrounding towns and cities. So there's an incentive for them to come here and do a good job, in my view. Secondly, you know, when they were talking about the bins and I didn't realize we had the bylaw, how would you feel about sites putting bins in sites that are easy for residents to access, that are under control? And this is just for a matter of discussion. Like at one of the fire stations where they're staffed basically twenty-four seven and there's some modicum of control, just, just as a thought. You know, if, because with the limited hours at the transfer station, just as a point of discussion, you might be able to control, I'm not suggesting putting a bin inside the South Titan Fire Station. But again, there's, there's, it's staffed there. So could we take advantage of that staffing and that controlled environment? If we wanted to expand beyond, if we wanted to do this to begin with and if we wanted to expand beyond just the transfer station? It's brainstorming times. Everything's on the table.
I, I hate to see, I hate to go back to those bins. Without fail, somebody's going to dump something there. I know she's going to be on the hook for it, but we had trash, bags of trash, like you said, seafood, you name it. These people were, not these people, I don't mean to sound that way. People were using these, these bins as collectalls. And, and it took a lot for the companies, for us to get the companies to come in town and take them away, the bins away, never mind even just dump them.
Where, where were they located?
Along one thirty-eight, as was the ones that, that come to mind. They were at that, where Computer Barn is down the road from there on one thirty-eight. Real, really, again, an eyesore. That's why I was asking her about what kind of business would, would, what kind of effect we would have if we only had one at the transfer station. I, I'd really want to see, I really, I would, I would make the recommendation to the selectmen that we see how that is done first before we would ever let them go on to.
I, I would agree with that. And I just something that perhaps on the back burner, the reason I asked the question where they were located because it really wasn't a controlled environment.
No, they would.
I would suggest that, that if the transfer station, a bin at the transfer station gives really robust use, then we might step back and say, gee, you know, maybe we can get more usage with easier access. But in some sort of controlled environments, that, that's why I brought up that point.
Right.
And the other point is, Todd had mentioned we're doing thirty-three thousand pounds a year. And that's strictly curbside, Todd, correct?
Well, yes, except that recently they haven't been doing the curbside, but yes, that was curbside only.
Yeah, so if, you know, we can revisit this if we're not hitting our marks with the curbside. And if the selectmen were agreeable to have been at the transfer station, we, we may, we may exceed the thirty-three and then we can revisit this down the road if one of them. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, we need to put our toe in the water first, so to speak. Right. But I think the most important thing is to keep the program going. Right now it's sort of defunct.
Well, it sounds like a win-win situation, a win for them, a win for us. I, I don't see the downside, at least not right now anyway.
So one of the things I like as well, I like is the fact that Simple Recycling had a three-year contract, which, you know, we knew how much and we know now how much things in the market really changed in three years. The proposed agreement we have from Help C now is a one-year. So like, I mean, like as Colonel Perry just mentioned, like it gives us time and them time for us to put our toe in the water with this new, with this new way forward and then evaluate how where we are in a year from now while also keeping our commitment, oh, you know, to do whatever we can to get the textiles out of the stream as well.
How, how accepting and were, were residents of the Pink Bag Program? How successful was it before there started to be issues with the, with the vendor? I mean, was it very successful?
Very successful.
So I mean, I, I think if, if the, the interest is still there and the residents see a successful program, back to your point, I think that poundage may increase. Right. So the only caveat, and, and I don't want to beat this up because it may purely be psychological, is the bag really not important? I don't know. Like the pink bag, I was witness to people coming in eager to get pink bags, bring the bags home, put the stuff in the bags. And I, I know that may be ceremonial and maybe I'm overthinking it, but we don't have that anymore. People don't put it in their own bags. So they're going to, they're not going to buy a Titan bag.
No.
So what are they going to do? How much, wow, who, who provided the pink bags? Simply Recycling did, but I don't think you were here at the last meeting. Didn't we go through the cost of the bags and they were very small amount of money?
Yeah, we're in the process of getting a price now. I think we already got a price, but it's something like ten cents a bag.
So I mean, one of the things, I mean, and I don't.
They do with the trash can, the town day trash bags, you know, we sell them by the, by the roll.
By the roll.
You know, the residents pay for their trash bags while we distribute it as like rolls, like, you know, X amount of bags per roll for X.
Yeah, how many, how many bags come in a roll, Todd? Do you know?
Ten.
So it could be a dollar for a roll for recycling and we would just cover the cost. I, I think that would be wise for the town. I mean, they, they put a figure up there from fifty-seven thousand pounds. They would give the town back twelve hundred dollars. Okay. That might cover the cost of it, but take it a step further with the, the new regulations. What, how much could we be fined as a town if we fall outside the state's parameters? I mean, you know, you have to balance that. Well, the other thing is, is this is just not a revenue source because fifty-seven thousand pounds comes out of the waste stream. Right. What does that cost us, Todd, to get rid of?
Seventy-eight dollars a ton.
Hey, that's simple math.
Yeah, that's real simple math.
That's about forty-seven thousand?
Pretty close.
So one of the.
And it's per ton.
Oh, per ton, sorry.
That's, it's okay.
Yeah.
What is seventy-eight per ton?
Yeah.
That would be about twenty-five.
But you went on both ends. You went on.
Fifty, fifty-seven thousand pounds is just over twenty-two hundred dollars. All right, so we, so we have a net gain of thirty, thirty-four hundred dollars. And we score points on our DEP report, right, Todd?
Yep. Well, yeah, it was points before, but now it's mandatory. So I don't know if we're going to be getting points next year or not. But yes, it was points.
So and I don't want to dwell too much into the psychological because we know, we all know I need psychological help anyways. But so one of the things, oh, you know, the pink bag, based on the awareness, oh, you know, there's a branding in the, like, it shows, oh, like a town, a commitment to doing this. It also allows us to generally know, like, when we see trash, oh, you know, like a trash bag's out on the corner of the street. Like if they have the pink bag, so like if we continue to utilize the pink bag number one, we're going to know what it is. Generally speaking, it's just a trash bag left on the side of the road. But it will also help really continue, like really the branding and the education and the awareness of the program that we're doing in the first place. Like with residents continuing to see that as well. So like, I mean, even if we do it on our own, like I do think there's a lot of value to.
So back to the, the can, the drop off can and possibly at the transfer station. What would we recommend to the board of health and, and just let men about the transfer station sticker? That's a good point because you need a sticker to get in.
Right. That gets expensive for somebody who wants to donate clothes.
Would we accept them if they were just dropping off textiles?
Well, it's a win-win situation for keeping it out of the landfill. I mean, keeping it out of the, the bins as well as, you, would you say we're a net gain of thirty-four hundred dollars?
Yes.
I, I'd be willing to, to have people just come to donate it and have to buy a sticker.
You can talk about the price of the bag and it's like, all right, somebody might pay a dollar for ten bags. But if you tell them it's going to cost them thirty dollars to drive it into the dump, then I.
They won't do it.
I would think that we could set up the transfer station so the book bin and a pink bag can could be before you get to the transfer station. If you happen to gate.
Right. That makes the most sense.
So. My point was, do, do we make the exemption like Peter was alluding to? Or do we reevaluate everything else that we don't charge for using a transfer station? Like getting rid of your leaves, your lawn clippings, your brush? And we just alleviate the transfer station sticker for those things? Or it's just, it's just for the books and the textile?
Well, I'm gonna argue, and I know we're not just talking. Well, I'm going to argue, and I know we're not talking fees tonight, but I'm going to argue that we do charge for brush and grass, because there is hard costs for us to process the brush and to manage it and to turn the compost and all the rest of it. A very small fee, I'm not saying $50 a truckload, but, you know, just $5 for the day for you to come in and drop your stuff. That also gets us to track how many people are using it, so we have an idea of how much volume we're getting and how many people are taking advantage of the program. Because right now, we don't know. John might be able to say, yeah, 12 people came in and dropped off grass on Saturday. You know, it would be nice to know, and I think a small fee would be a good thing for that. But if there's no cost to us for processing pink bags or books, then I don't see the need to charge anything.
Plus, the transfer station verifies that they're a Titan resident, right?
Yes.
Great. So I'd like you guys to consider a transfer station sticker for all use. And they still have the option for curbside pickup. They can choose to go to the transfer station. We're not forcing them to. So are you suggesting that everyone that uses a transfer station for whatever purpose has to have a transfer station sticker? I would suggest that if they're dropping off leaves, recycled clothing, et cetera, there's no additional fee for that, but stay with the schedule you have now, because we may pick up more people that are just use the transfer station for those types of things, leaves, et cetera. So I mean, there wouldn't be an additional fee scheduled, so you've got a truckload of leaves, that's $4 or something like that, you know. Right now, it's free with.
Yeah, we can up cost the price of the sticker by X amount of dollars to cover the cost for the.
The sticker should be reflecting the tenant's salary at least.
Yeah. Yeah, the whole thing needs to be looked at. Right now, it's not cost effective, and the taxpayers are subsidizing the operation of the transfer station, which is what we want to get away from.
Well, not to get into that discussion, but way back when, when I was on the board, really had to balance between what you were charging and what residents were willing to pay. And if they weren't willing to pay it, ultimately, the highway department ended up picking it up off the side of the road. So I mean, when the Board of Health considers all that, I mean, those factors have to be integrated into that decision, too.
And reflecting back to the brushes and the leaves, there's going to be more volume in the fall time rather than the winter. There's going to be an increase soon, but then it's going to dip completely for four, five months.
Do we chop up the brush and leaves and everything? Do we sell out of the residents to come and just pick it up for the use around the yard?
The residents love to take wood, woodchicks, and compost, as long as they have a transfer station sticker. Yeah, that's, that was it, yes.
And do we. So where are we right now, in terms of this presentation versus?
Yeah, we need to make a decision. I can see the agenda, but it's on the agenda, right?
Yeah. So this is just my thought. I mean, I think, I mean, we have to have a bigger, you know, discussion about the transfer, the transfer station and sickrify, like more globally, what it really covers and doesn't cover. But, oh, you know, and whether it covers brush and leaves and everything else. But I think for the here and now, like I would recommend just really, like dealing with HelpSee in the here and now, because we do have a challenge with Simple Recycling. Like, you know, the terms of the contract that we have aren't the same as when we entered into. And we're potentially losing momentum every day that we go forward. So, you know, I mean, this is just my thought, but if, but I, so but I do agree with having a bin at the transfer station. You know, because we're trying to incentivize people and our residents to take the textiles out of our trash stream, like in use through in this case, to HelpSee screen. I would recommend having a process at the transfer station, like where we allow the attendant to really see what is actually, oh, you know, have HelpSee bins so far removed, also where the transfer station attendant is, so he can have some like, some visual accountability as to what people are trying to throw in the bins. But we don't, we don't require a sticker to have people and our residents throw things in the bins. I'll, and then we, I'll, and then we make, I like a recommendation, you know, to the Board of Health and the selectmen that we move forward with the HelpSee contract. Those are just my thoughts, but like I just wanted to weigh in on that.
Yeah, so I see this as a three-part thing. Number one is, I think we should recommend that a bin for textiles be placed at the transfer station. Second part would be that we recommend hiring HelpSee or entering a contract with HelpSee. And the third part would be the fees, which is not on the agenda tonight, so I think we can discuss it at the next meeting. But by the time the Board of Health votes on hiring HelpSee and we enter into a contract with the selectmen and everything else, we'll have had another meeting in between then, and we can decide this issue, whether we charge for these.
If I could add on, Todd, to what you said, I think, I agree with making the recommendation to sign a contract with this firm. I think also to get things moving as quickly as possible with the educational programs, et cetera, and the fact that there has to be some discussion regarding the transfer station. I think before, and I'm all for putting a bin at the transfer station. But prior to doing that, I think some of these issues with stickers, fees, et cetera, need to be worked out by the Board of Health. So I would advocate that we enter, or the Board of Health enter an agreement with HelpSee. And in addition, make them aware that the second issue needs to be looked at, the bin at the transfer station. But get the program rolling now, okay? And, you know, not wait for two or three discussions at the Board of Health to figure out fees. And let's get it rolling now, say this could be an add-on. There's a lot of verbiage there, but I think you get the point.
Is that a motion?
No, no.
I have a couple of questions, all relevant. Mr. Mullin, are we obligated to Simple Recycling, or are we done with them?
We have to give them 30 days' notice. That's it.
Okay. So we have to officially give them 30 days' notice, so we're 30 days out, right?
Yes. So I mean, we're well within the timeframe of when our meetings are. I mean, so like at this point, we would likely anticipate a, like a contract executed. So on November 1st, we're ready to go with HelpSee.
Okay. And the Board of Health needs to make a recommendation to the selectmen, because the selectmen enter into the contract, correct?
Right.
Yes.
All right, then the last question is, and I may have missed this early, and I'm sorry, who provides the bin? They provide the bin?
Yes.
Contract.
Okay.
And one more question for the committee officer. So does this mean any thresholds that you would have to negotiate with the Board of Health with?
No. Based on, that was one of my questions earlier, but once I saw the numbers, even at the, I think, 57 pounds a month, the benefit, the financial benefit in total, based on the savings and the revenue, is only not even six grand, so we're well within sound business practices.
Right. So I'll make the motion that we consider moving forward with HelpSee as a recommendation to the Board of Health. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just so everybody knows the timeline, the Board of Health will meet on October 13th. And at that time, to make a recommendation, and the selectmen meet on October 26th.
Hence the reason Administrator Mullin chose that date.
So does that mean?
Yeah, I'm just thinking of a notice. I'm just thinking of providing notice, but nothing official and backup at this point, too.
I mean, the selectmen don't need the Board of Health to recommend, you know, ending the contract. They could do it without their recommendation at their next meeting.
Any other thoughts or comments or concerns?
Yeah, we can figure that out internally. I'm not worried about that, to be honest with you.
But we still understand that we're going to make the recommendation, but to the Board of Health with the understanding that there are still some details to move forward with this HelpSee. But there are still some issues that need to be addressed. If a container is going to go at the transfer station with the issues that we raised here today. But here again, back to what I said previously, let's get the ball rolling, you know? And then I think that's something that can be dealt with soon enough. Start the ball rolling, don't hold it up.
Well, as you went Hawaii.
Yeah.
It is unaddressed. We have already the price scale, so the sticker is part of the price scale. Consider since it's already been started. I'm assuming the next meeting will make it contain that, so it's already motioned.
Okay. You have to forgive me, I was on vacation during the last meeting.
I will say, though, that I think I want to have the Board of Health vote at their October 13th meeting to ask the selectmen to put a textile bin there, because that gives this committee basically until October 26th to sort out whether or not we want the bin or not. Because I don't want to lose another month in getting a bin there if we have to wait for the Board of Health to be in November to then have a meeting. So and the selectmen can table the vote and wait on it, but as long as the Board of Health has made their request for recommending it, then we won't lose that time.
Okay, but I would say that there needs to be some sort of, I agree, put it there, okay. But there still needs to be some sort of, even if it's a temporary operating protocol, to, whatever it is, but it's on a piece of paper, so everyone understands how this protocol is going to work, okay? So it's uniform for anybody that drives in and wants to donate textiles.
We have people that use a transfer station from infancy, just because they don't want anyone to see what's going out to the curb from their house. So I envision that happening with the textiles, too.
So Tim Mullins, when is our next meeting again?
I believe it's the 20, 26th, 26th, that's what it was.
26th.
The 20. 22nd, right?
No, 26th, that would be Wednesday.
26th of September?
No, October.
No, I have October 5th is what we voted.
Yeah, because I was. Because I was, I'm at a training that week.
October 5th at 5:30.
I will not be here.
And Administrator Mullin, we have another meeting that night as well.
Yeah.
Well, again, that was what we chose at the last meeting, obviously, it may need to change.
Are you available on the 19th?
Yeah.
Of October?
Yeah. I'm on vacation, but I can come in again. I'm not away, so I can do what I did tonight.
Everybody, are you okay with October 19th, then to reschedule next holiday waste meeting? That's fair.
Siri Blinkey?
19th.
Yeah, we have a stormwater meeting that day, but otherwise.
Mr. Care, is that okay with you?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
6 o'clock or 5:30?
Yeah, 6 o'clock works. 5:30 works if we're going to do Zoom.
I'm sorry?
Prime time again, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Unless anybody on the, all town, I think that's being occupied.
Yeah, it's pretty busy. I'm getting used to the smell of you now.
All right, so the 19th. So the 19th would give us time to really perfect our expectations with the program as well, the transfer station.
And know this, that December, I mean, January 1st is when the new stickers roll in. So if we're going to raise the price of stickers and what you can do and everything else, we've got to have that in place by Thanksgiving, so that we can get the word out, because people stop buying the stickers in November. Now, we need to do it now.
Well, we start selling next year's stickers in November, yes. It's something to look forward to, that one month phase.
So I think our focus for the next two meetings, if I'm, unless I misunderstood, is going to be on the transfer station fee schedule and.
And the mattress.
Closet, right, mattresses. Yeah, so I think we can get that done by Thanksgiving. If that's all we're doing.
The fee themselves are going to take up a good.
I'm sorry?
The fees themselves, they're going to take up a good chunk of the meeting.
More than one meeting. Does that make sense, Administrator Mullin?
It does.
Okay.
Motion, Mr. Jerry?
Do I have a second?
Also, Administrator Mullin, not to get back to the psychosis discussion, but are you zooming in from a pink bedroom?
It's violet.
Oh, okay.
Nice.
Just a point of order, yeah.
Right. Have we adjourned yet?
I made a motion.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
I'm just curious. I think we should probably ask him, but how much is the taxpayers subsidizing the transfer station?
I believe.
Not waste collection.
No, I know, but yeah, waste collection, yeah. I believe we're close. We can close the gap. $25,000, maybe? $30,000? It wasn't a lot. We're close.